Calling tonight's meeting of the zoning board order. I'm gonna let Oleg explain the procedure for tonight. It's gonna be quite a bit different than our normal zoning board hearing. But with us tonight, members of the board, George Killings, Sandy Cooney, Sheldon... Excuse me. Jeremy Page, John Pivaya, Ken Johnson, our legal counsel, Oleg Niko-Wishin, myself, our building official, Mr. Joe Raymond. Joe is doing double, triple duty tonight. We've had turmoil in the office at the building department. There's a family crisis, Paulie Hopps will not be here. We wish her well, whatever happens over there. And we have our court reporter, Mr. Angelo. Like I said, the procedure is totally different and with us, representatives from Invenergy led by Beth Noonan, near interior. I'm gonna let Oleg explain what the process is gonna be tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have previously conducted hearings, heard testimony, heard public comments from everyone, and we continued this hearing till tonight to receive the advisory opinion from the planning board to the zoning board. That is the sole purpose for which this hearing was continued. So there won't be any more testimony or public hearings. The order sent to us by the energy facility siting board was for the zoning board to consider three issues. One is whether the facility would meet the requirements of our respective zoning ordinances and whether any variance should be granted. Now, I interpret that to mean that this facility is being located in an F5 zone and this facility needs a special use permit. Item number two, whether a special use permit should be granted to exempt the facility from construction, our restrictions. And three, whether Invenergy would be able to be compliant with our town noise ordinance during construction and operation, and if not, whether a variance should be granted. I had previously prepared a memorandum, which I have given to the board, outlining what the law provides as to, under what conditions a special use permit is to be granted. I've outlined the Supreme Court cases on the issue and basically what it provides for in a nutshell, that a special use permit, that a decision by a zoning authority granting or denying a special use permit must be based on a finding that the proposed use is in accord with the public convenience and welfare. And explaining what those terms mean, the Supreme Court went on to describe certain criteria. One of them is that there must be hardship established. And hardship is also defined by the Supreme Court in various phraseology, one of which is that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. We have recently received the planning board advisory opinion, which is approximately 26 pages and more in length. The planning board's advisory opinion that's addressed to us, the zoning board is, I believe, on page 24 through 26, and it makes specific recommendations, and that's why we are here. Before we proceed, however, I understand that Invenergy would like to add to the record some documents, which are transcripts of what happened from the planning board, which is something that I would want on behalf of zoning board as well. I want to rely upon what happened at the planning board. So, Ms. Noonan, would you like to describe what it is that you're presenting?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, it's Beth Noonan on behalf of Invenergy. As we did at the last hearing, we are introducing the transcripts from the planning board hearings that have been held since we last met on July 12th. And so I have provided each of you with a copy of these, and I would like to ask that they be marked as our mixed exhibits, D and E. D would be the August 15th planning board transcript, and E would be the August 22nd planning board transcript.
I have no objection on behalf of the board to the admittance of these transcripts to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We do have two other items that have been in the public record. They've been up on the website. They've been all part of this process. The first one that I would like to add in, just because it was a question raised earlier, these are the responses of Invenergy to the Rhode Island Department of Health opinion. Again, this has been out in the public for a while, but I just, it came up, I think, at last meeting, the advisory opinion from the Department of Health, and if we could make that exhibit F. And that is our, again, Invenergy's responses to the Department of Health's advisory opinion, and those are dated August 9th, 2016. And then the final one is exhibit G, which is, again, is something that's been out in the public domain, but since our last meeting, this is dated July 29th, 2016, and it's a memo from McMahon with the transportation engineers, addressed to me, addressing various issues, but one in particular that was raised at the last zoning board meeting dealt with alternate truck routes. And so I would ask that that belong to as exhibit G. And that's all we have to present.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a couple of questions before we proceed.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, representing Heat Bowl of Beautiful, I would like to ask a point of clarification. Seeing that this is a continuation of a meeting that began on July 12th, at that meeting it was stated if time permits, there would be additional public comment. My question is, my clarification point is, A, why were there no written agendas available to the people that are here this evening? And B, are we gonna go through with what we said at the beginning of this meeting, which was if time permits, there will be public comment? Thank you.
Here's the thing, if it's something that hasn't been revealed, if it's something that is not in any of this pile of documents, if it's something brain new to the case...
How would we know?
We'll give you two minutes.
How would we know? That is considered, well, that was dated 29th. Today is the 30th, so in those two days, we had a chance to review it. I mean, how would we know?
I think you have a good point. This was just given to us as well. And this deals, I believe, with traffic. Maybe Ms. Noonan can summarize what it says?
Why does he get the chance to talk? I don't get it. We pay the taxes here.
Sorry.
What is worth it?
If I may, those items were included mainly because they supplement the planning board record that we have made part of this hearing in accordance with how we did it last time. So what that report goes through from McMahon is a discussion about alternate truck routes that was raised, and again, this was part of the planning board hearing on August 15th, and the questions that were raised there, and also at the zoning board. But it goes through, and again, this has been part of the record for a period of time, and there was a review of alternate truck routes and a determination by McMahon about the use of routes, and that there really wasn't any viable alternate route for the trucks than what was already proposed. That's it. That was part of the planning board record. If it's gonna cause a problem, I'm withdrawn, because this is nothing new to the planning board, and it has been part of the record for a month.
Is it part of the planning board?
It is.
What is it?
Both by, both by my side, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we do have...
Can I have your name, sir, please? I need your name, sir.
I'm sorry. My name is Barry Craig, 180 Maroni Road, Pasco. We do have a person here who has expertise and is prepared to testify on low, on low octave vibrations. She compared a written report, if you have that written, that written report was submitted to the planning board. If you have that written report and you've considered it, then her testimony would not be necessary. But if not, we'd appreciate two minutes for her to be able to tell you what the findings were.
My understanding is everything that has transpired in front of the planning board is part of the record with the zoning board. So if there was...
Well, maybe a specific assurance, or maybe you could spare the ten to the two minutes of the counsel and let her talk.
Do you know who that individual was? Let me check.
Stephanie Sloman. Right, you got a copy of that? I put it in the mailbox.
This report was discussed with Mr. Hesner at length. Mr. Hesner disregards this report, and Mrs. Sloman, he rebuts what she wrote. He distances himself from the facts in that report, and he has, finally, Mr. Hesner, who is the towns consultant, the towns professional, expert, paid-for consultant, said that the bottom line is, the low octave is within, is not negotiable here. That's Mr. Hesner's.
Mr. Chairman, that...
It means it's all, it's all in the report where the noise experts, I'll read it, I'll read it in our summary later on, it's in the planning board, it's all in the planning board, where the low octave, as a matter of fact, the planning board recommends that we grant a waiver for the low octave, because...
You have my house! You get the low octave at my house, snap!
You know...
We're not gonna get anywhere by trying to shout me down or anybody else down. I'm just telling you, I'm telling you what's in the planning board report. We just said, if we don't get, if you wanna submit, if you wanna submit something new, it's all well and good, but as far as the noise goes, it's all detailed in the planning board report from testimony that they got. And that testimony, please, please.
Can I make a point of order?
Come down.
Do the members...
State your name, please, and spell it.
I think I should, yeah. Let me name again.
State your name and spell it, please.
I think...
May I finish and then press the call people in order? I'd like to know whether...
Give me the name again, sir, please.
Get your microphone.
Barry Craig, okay, thank you.
State my name again. My name is Barry Craig, C.R.A.I.G., 180 Maroni Road, Pasco, Rhode Island, 02856. My question is whether that document has been submitted to the members of the planning board, of the, sorry, the zoning board, and if not, do you entertain two minutes to listen to what she has to say?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear your question. Would you repeat it?
Sorry, I can't.
Yeah, can you hear me now? All right. What I'm asking you to do is give discretion to the person who wrote that report to explain to the zoning board why she believes that the low octave decibel levels are levels that can be controlled. Now, I know you say that the towns expert disagrees, but towns experts have disagreed with a lot of things, including information that has been submitted by Invenergy. So it seems to be only fair that the zoning board, since that is one of the major bones of contention in the, in the planning board report, that the zoning board spent two minutes, two minutes, to listen to what she has to say.
Okay. Under these conditions, as you stated so eloquently, two minutes, and with the understanding that this witness is not sound expert, is not a sound professional in any way, shape, manner, or form.
The zoning board can listen to her professional qualifications...
I said, I said we would listen to her with those conditions. I think that's fair.
No, Barry was gonna say she's gonna list her credentials, so you understand her credentials.
She's entitled, I think, to present her credentials.
Yes, she is. I'm gonna listen to her.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, hi, my name is Suniti Lucier, L-U-S-S-I-E-R, 150, Old Wilmer Road.
Would you raise your right hand, please?
Honestly?
Yes, honestly.
Oh, okay.
I solemnly swear the testimony that you were about to give is there in the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I just have, my question is, will other people be similarly sworn?
Are we gonna have to go through this? We said, if it's brain new and if it's something that has not been submitted to the planning board or the zoning board...
I just have a point of order, sir. I didn't, I'm not submitting anything. I have a point of order. I understand that you have a copy of the planning board opinion, advisory opinion, that's been supplied to you this evening, correct? And you've had time to review it and read it and...
It was not supplied to us this evening. It was supplied to us again this evening, but we had it.
So I had made a request to have a copy of that opinion when it was prepared and ready to be shared, and I was denied that. So I'm wondering why, when it's, you know, like, it's really hard to be sitting here and not have had the same, I don't know how we're expected to either reflect, understand, agree, or disagree if we're not allowed to have the information. So I'm wondering, in your role as chairman, if you will order that to be dispersed and made available to the general public, since it is a public document tomorrow?
That's beyond my jurisdiction. Who, to whom did you make the request?
I made a request to the planning board chairman.
If I may, I report, I spoke to Mr. McElroy, my assistant, today, this morning, requesting information. The decision or the opinion has been written. It's 26 pages long, but attached to that is going to be an index. It's going to have all the reports from all the experts. It's going to have comments from everyone attached, and it literally is going to be a three-ring binder that stands about five to seven inches tall. And it's being printed and bound, and I understand this should be ready tomorrow. And we need 10 copies to be submitted to the energy facility siting board, and of course, it'll be put on the webpage of town as well. It just hasn't been manually compiled yet. But the 26-page opinion that they wrote, which is supportive of all that other documentation, has been prepared and given to all the members. And most likely tomorrow, it'll probably be posted on the website.
Right. I didn't want the five-inch blue three binder. I wanted the same 26-page report that, that you all have had the opportunity to look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you advise Mr. Wood of that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question on Jan Booby.
Are you the person who's testifying?
No, I just have a question.
Let's, let's let the person testify that we agreed to have him.
This is a very short question. What was just submitted to you by Invenergy from the Department of Health, was that the draft opinion, or was that a final draft?
The Department of Health has so far presented only the draft. I understand that within a week...
So nothing finalized from that?
The Department of Health will have a final version of that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have that, nobody has it yet.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point of order. The noise ordinance and...
Would you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
I solemnly swear the testimony that you were about to give is there in the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
Would you state your name, please, and spell it for us?
Robert Woods, R-O-B-E-R-T, Woods, W-O-O-D-S, with an S. The noise ordinance is in the municipal code, is not in the zoning ordinance. The zoning board gets its authority from the enable of legislation, which is part of the general laws. So even though the energy siting board has asked you to give an advisory opinion on that, it has as much weight as asking me or anyone else in this audience, because you don't have the authority to answer that question.
Point being?
So my point being is that it's a moot point, so move on to the next item on the agenda and forget entertaining that question.
So you want me to, you want me to disregard whoever has an opinion or question on noise tonight? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, is that if you're going to entertain anything on the noise, you should have a conversation with the town council and ask how to handle that, because you're not the authority to make that assumption.
Thank you for the advice, sir.
Weight heavily.
Right, right, Oleg. Okay, right.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Because I solemnly swear the testimony that you were about to give is there, you took the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Please, and spell it for us.
I feel very badly that you guys didn't get a copy of this report. Feel badly that when I was at the planning board, obviously the planning board members didn't get a copy of this report. I know I have only two minutes. Let me just read a couple of things from this report. You have a report. You read it. On page 97 of Invenergy's application concerning low-frequency octave bands, and I'll tell you what they are, and the fact that Borgen's ordinance is among the stringent we have seen in the United States, it states on that page, and I quote, "This is particularly relevant since low-frequency emissions are generally more difficult to mitigate than our high-frequency noise emissions." This statement in their application proves that it is indeed possible to mitigate the low octave, low-frequency noise that Invenergy proposed power plant will produce. So if it's possible, then why give them the variance? Is my point. I talk about how badly low-frequency noise is for people, and then I go into the negative effects on wildlife, farm animals, et cetera. Just wanted to read one section, and I'm gonna, you know, read right off here, so if I go too fast, let me know. Important, okay, "I want to admit that I emailed Mr. Hessel anonymously concerning combined-cycle natural gas power plants and low-frequency noise. I know, me bad." This is a quote from his email. "For critical sites with nearby houses and/or very low permissible noise limits, the plate thickness on this part of the HRSG is increased from a standard 1/4 inch thickness to 1/2 inch." And then in parentheses, I have, "I believe that Invenergy is already doing this to mitigate the DBA limit of Borgen's noise ordinance." He continued, however, "When more of a reduction is required, an external shroud is often used, which consists of metal panels forming barrier walls on the sides, or a complete enclosure with a roof over the HRSG metal on the interior face, on the transit, I'm sorry, on the transition duct. These panels are typically 20-gauge steel on the exterior, 4 inches of fiberglass insulation, and 24-gauge perforated metal on the interior face. The exterior sheet resists the penetration of noise to the outside, and acoustically absorbent lining prevents noise from reflecting back and building up inside the noise enclosure."
Prevents noise from...
Prevents noise from reflecting back and building up inside the noise enclosure. Mr. Hessel continued, "Another source of moderate low-frequency noise in a combined-cycle plant are the fans in the cooling tower, or cooling, which Invenergy doesn't have cooling towers, or air-cooled condensers, ACC, as the case may be. When needed," this is still quoted from the email, "when needed, which is often, low-noise fans are used instead of standard fans, which usually produce significant noise in the 125 to 250 Hz octave bands. Low-noise fans typically rotate at a slower speed, which leads to much less noise, and these blades have a very wide width, a chord, that allows them to move more air at a slower speed." One more sentence. He continued, "The very quietest fans, the model SX, made by Houdon Fans in the Netherlands, are extremely wide to the point where there is almost no open area in the fan wheel." And basically, as you can see above, Mr. Hessel has relayed to me other ways that Invenergy has not included in its noise mitigation, low-frequency noise, and it is possible for Invenergy to reduce the low octave band levels in its proposed design.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please? Did the planning board have that letter from Mr. Hessel?
I gave it to Mr. Hessel. He's here, he can verify it. I emailed him this report as an attachment. What he told me was that he had, and you can verify this, he emailed it to the attorney and I, did you say, I can't remember if he told me, the chairperson of the planning board, and it was ignored.
Can you give me the date of that letter, please?
I mailed, I emailed it to Mr. Kravitz on Sunday night on the 21st.
No, Mr. Hessel's a lot of fear. What's the date of that letter?
Now, I could give you a guess. It was the week before. I can give, give it to you if you want. I have a copy of it. I would say it was a Friday, so let's say 22nd, 20, I would say the 18th to 19th...
Of what month?
Of August.
Because the planning board lists the dates of certain letters from Mr. Hessel, and I believe there were three dates from August, that Mr. Hessel wrote letters that are included in the planning board's opinion, which should also be attached to the planning board's opinion as an exhibit.
So the emails that Mr. Hessel sent me, is that what you're saying?
That was my question. Did you, did that letter...
What I just, yes, I did, I emailed him anonymously, because I knew if I said who I was, where I was from, he was just going to, you tell. Want to speak? Okay. Anyway, I sent him a letter anonymously, because I knew if I told him who I was, where I was from, he would just take his report that he submitted to the town council, and he would just say exactly the same thing. However, I did more research on it, so I knew that there were ways that they could reduce, power plants could reduce the low-frequency noise, which is dangerous to human beings and wildlife. Farm animals, dairy cows can produce less milk, chickens will produce less eggs. I can go on. It's an 11-page report. I spent the whole week prior to that meeting. I spent the whole week prior to that meeting on this.
If I may get to the point, according to the opinion from the planning board, the planning board lists numerous recommendations to the sitting board, asking that the sitting board adopt as conditions, in the event that they choose to grant the permit.
Right.
As conditions. The recommendations made by Mr. Hessler, and then it lists Mr. Hessler's recommendations contained in the letters, and I'm going to give you the dates of those letters, maybe they coincide with what you're reading. The letters and memorandum dated May 26, July 12, August 8, August 10, August 16, and August 22. So, if what you're referring to is already in there, then it's...
I don't have a copy of it with me. But, I mean, I have...
Your email...
I have it at home. It's... I save everything.
Well, what you just referenced, that copy of the email?
That is excerpts. I didn't want to put the whole email in here. I did think about attaching it, but...
Well, I don't know whether or not the planning board has that or not, so I can't...
Well, yeah, I do know that Mr. Kravitz had it, and I believe that he told me that he had given it to the... To Mr. McElroy, the attorney?
And Hessler.
And Mr. Hessler. And I don't know, so...
Stephanie, can you just give us your presentation, please? I don't think we've got it.
Well, I have a BS in biology and a minor in chemistry, and I'm a retired environmental engineer. So, they, you know, I mean, I... You know, I'm not an expert in noise, but you don't have to be because you have the internet. You can learn from, you know, not only other noise experts. I mean, I was in... I was back and forth with Noise Solutions in Canada, and I explained everything that I knew about the plant, and they were willing to say, hey, we can do it, we can take care of this, this is a problem and we can take care of it. So, I have that whole email conversation with them. So, they can do it, so this is my point. If they can do it, it's possible, even if they have to go to the Netherlands to get the damn fans. Why should we allow them the variance for low-octave bands? They admitted it on page 27 of the application, the original application. They admitted. Because, you know, maybe it'll cost a little money, come on, this is a multimillion-dollar corporation, they can afford it. And we, poor slobs, are over here fighting amongst ourselves, and this is part of their game plan. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I asked, and he kindly agreed, the town planning to possibly address this. Would you raise your right hand, please, sir? I solemn swear the testimony that you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name, please, for us.
Thomas Kravitz. The only clarification I can provide is that the planning board did not, in fact, see that report that was prepared by Ms. Sloman. But I did, as soon as I got it, forwarded it right away to McElroy and Hessler to confirm as to what, you know, what the findings are, added if they're... I asked Hessler to give us some feedback. This was having by email because it's very close to the planning board's meeting. And Hessler, when he saw who it was from, Ms. Sloman, he fell back on his position without getting into the specifics of the facility that she was describing. He fell back on the position that the low octave bands, and this is on page 19 in the advisory opinion of the planning board, is that the CREG won't substantially change or increase the low-frequency sound levels in any meaningful way. That means that any potential impact on wildlife from low-frequency noise, if there is one, is already present from the existing spectra of turbines. So, his position's always been that, he said that the facility will not add to what spectra is already doing. So, that's what the planning board has. The last paragraph on this page 19 in the section says, accordingly, it is our opinion, that is, the opinion of the planning board, that the CREG facility will be able to comply with our noise ordinance provided the zoning board a review grants Invenergy a waiver slash specialties permit, exempting the CREG from the octave band limits and the ordinance. So, they really did kind of throw it on you and you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for that, too. I'm gonna read this into my advisory opinion later on, but here's the thing, I'll read to you what the advisory, the advisory that the planning board sent to us on this matter. But also remember that when we make our advisory opinion, we can put a condition on that if this noise is not, these noise standards are not meant that the plant permit be revoked, we'll make that one of the conditions of our advisory opinion.
Say no! Just say no!
I will put that in as a condition on our advisory opinion to the EFSP. So, here's what the planning board told us, and the planning board, and I have to believe that the planning board did extensive studies on everything. And here's what they said to us. "As to the requested octave band review, special use permit, we are of the opinion that the evidence, especially the testimony of the town's noise consultant, has shown that the octave band limits are unreasonably restricted. The waiver will not increase the low-frequency noise already present in the area due to the spectra of gangquin facility, and there will be no adverse effect on residents or wildlife if the waiver is granted. We therefore recommend for the zoning board that the waiver should be approved if the conditions set forth in paragraph 3 on page 20 are strictly complied with," which basically is saying the same thing. If they don't comply with all the noise, it'll be rejected.
Don't give it...
I guess say a couple of words.
They don't need a waiver.
Oh, sorry.
They're not gonna break the law.
You have something new, sir?
Yes, I do.
State it.
My name is Kenneth W. Putnam, Jr.
Would you raise your right hand? Testimony that you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Let's hear something new, sir, or we'll shut it down.
Well, I don't know if it's new or not, but...
I asked you, and you said it was new.
Well, to me, everything here is pretty new to me.
You've been at all the areas.
I've been to all, yes, believe me, I've been to all. Now, one thing I want you to know, you folks are like us, you live here in town, right? And I'm only gonna give you common sense, I don't have that college degree, but I'm gonna tell you, there's so many things that's wrong with this. This woman that came in that said these trucks would come up through Pasco without any problems, she was shot down up there. She didn't even know, she never traveled the road or anything. They hit her with that. But here's the other thing, here, you have to realize that this noise up there, DEM has not come out, and the zoning, the other boards said they weren't gonna make any decisions on it until DEM come out and said something about it, about the wildlife animals and everything. They haven't, and they came out after that and said they don't want to give a report till after the first of the year. Well, how can we give a report if they're not gonna give a report? We shouldn't give them a report. We should hold it down and say no unless they can come up and say, oh, hey, DEM says it's not gonna interfere with the animals. They're the experts here, we are here. DEM is the experts, right? Wildlife is the experts. They should be giving us that opinion before you guys here should be voting on that and giving them any variance whatsoever for that project.
Say no!
This is our home. I would like to tell you something new here, too. You see, there's not many people here, but do you know how many people are interested in this, in this town? There's so many people, and if you're just right around on Backroad, you'll see it. A lot of people can't, and they're scared to even come to these meetings. A lot of them work late, they can't get here. And they're counting on us, and that's why we here are counting on you folks up there to hold up this for us. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. A couple of phrases that you used, Mr. Putnam, make an awful lot of sense, common sense. As you know, we're gonna try our best here. But as you know from attending the planning board meetings, the chairman of the planning board stated frequently many, many times that he's, that they don't have all the information they need, we don't have...
Why are you giving them the news of the joke?
They don't get the variance.
Shouting me down is not gonna help us.
We're not.
I agree. If things were done in a normal manner, the way they should be done, we would, all of us, have all the facts necessary to make an informed decision. However, that's not how this works. So, we're gonna do, as the planning board did, we're gonna do our due diligence, we're gonna do the best we can, we're gonna give some kind of an advisory opinion with what we have. But we're limited, we're constrained, we have time limits, we have all kinds of limits, we have deadlines. This is the way it is, and we can yell, shout, curse, get mad at each other, raise our tempers, raise our voices, none of it is gonna matter, none of it is gonna help. We have to do what we have to do. We're gonna get through this, we're gonna give our advisory opinion. Some of you, I'm sure, will not agree with it. Hopefully, people will agree with what we're doing. As Mr. Putnam just so eloquently stated, we are also town residents, we're not here to harm the town. Give me a break. So, you know, we're gonna do the best we can with what we have, is basically the best way that I can put this. But shouting at each other is not gonna help anything. And repeated, 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 the same things over and over again, it's not gonna drive home any points that have not been made. So, you know, I mean, if you want to waste more of our time and your time, feel free, I guess, is the way it's gonna be, but, you know.
I'd like to add to that before we move on. Mr. Putnam raised a very good point. We do not have all the information that we would like. There are other agencies that are doing their work. They will not do or finish their job. Most likely, let's take DEM, for example, they probably will finish their job for another Under the law, we have a responsibility to give us, give the sitting board our opinion. And they gave us a certain time limit, and that time limit is not arbitrary, it's written into the law. That time limit provides that if we do not provide our opinion as to what we want, whether we think something should be done or something should not be done, by a certain date, that date happened to be, I believe, September 12th, before our Monday. If we don't provide them with our advisory opinion by that date, we waive our right to have our voices heard. So, if we don't like what Invenergy is doing, and we don't provide our opinion to the sitting board by that date, they ignore it. We waive our right to be heard. So, we have to do what we can by that date. We would love to go back and wait for everybody to finish their job to our satisfaction, and then render an opinion. But if we don't have that, we still should be heard. We should tell the sitting board what we want or don't want.
Don't.
Or we just waive it, right? Your voices will not be heard. So, please, allow us to do what we can with what we have.
I just have a brief statement.
Raise your right hand, please, so I can swear you in. Because I solemn swear the testimony that you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Nothing but.
State your name, please.
Denise Potvin from Harrisville. Most of us in this room have raised children or are in the process of raising children. I have three that are in their twenties. If they come to me and they ask me to go out to a party with their friends, and I ask them, whose house? Who's gonna be there? Is there gonna be alcohol? Who's driving? If they can't answer those questions to me, the answer is...
No!
Your advisory opinion, we understand, we want our voices heard. We know that you are part of our family in some ways. Our voices are telling you, if you don't have enough information or you have conflicting information, just say no.
Raise your right hand, please. I solemn swear the testimony that you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
So, help me God.
State your name, please.
Jeremy Bailey, J-E-R-E-M-Y, B-A-I-L-E-Y. I'd like to address the letter that I've heard writ at several different meetings from Mr. Hessler, and I'm deeply disturbed by it. And to paraphrase what you just read, was that since Invenergy, since Spectra is already making the noise, then we're not making it any worse. And I'm gonna make a little analogy for you. If I tell my kids, be quiet, it's time to go to bed, and I go upstairs, and I find two of my children making noise, and one of them says, yeah, but daddy, he was making more noise. Guess what? They're both in trouble, they're both being disciplined. How dare Mr. Hessler take it upon himself to say, you know what, Spectra's already putting these low frequencies in, so why not let somebody else? As a matter of fact, you may or may not be aware, but our town, this, our town, has already written a letter to FERC addressing those low-frequency noises and those low-frequency vibrations that we're getting. And there, it was strongly worded, I believe Oleg wrote it, that they need to mitigate it, they need to change their turbines, they need to do something to fix it. So, the excuse is that you're going to allow or advise that they waive any type of our noise ordinance because someone else is already violating it is wrong. And to Mrs. Potvin's... And to Mrs. Potvin's point, your job in this case is to just say no. And I'd like to finish with this, I'd like, by a show of hands, how many people on our zoning board live within one mile of the proposed site of this power plant, please? One, two. Thank you, there's two of you up there that do. Thank you, that's it.
Raise your right hand, please. I solemn swear the testimony that you were about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name, please.
Katherine Sherman, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N-S-H-E-R-M-A-N. I'd like to thank the board for being here tonight. I know this is difficult for you, just as it is for us. I'd like to address the data that came in today, specifically the letter from Hankard Environmental addressing the octave band noise levels on the site. First of all, if the octave band noise levels that we have here in Barvel are extremely low, they must be low for a reason, because good men and women like you set that limit. And if you want to do business in that, in this town, like any other business, you have to adhere to the rules. We here, we have to adhere to the rules. You've asked us to comply with your rules. That's our octave band level, and there's no reason why we should have to submit a waiver. My second point, again, with Mr. Putnam's common sense, I'd like to know who asked for this waiver. That property is owned by Spectra. There's only an intent to purchase it by Invenergy. They don't even own the land. So, if the, if the octave band level's gonna be granted, and it's gonna be granted to Spectra, they're non-complying anyway. So, you wouldn't provide a waiver to a non-complying property. So, if it's a non-complying entity that's asked for the waiver, then they don't have standing. If it's Invenergy that asks for the waiver, they don't own the property. So, there's your own common sense. In this, in this document from Hankard Environmental, on the second page, the first sentence states that the site of the proposed CREC facility is with, in, within an industrial-zoned parcel next to the site of a natural gas compressor station. Now, it's not an industrial-zoned site, it's an F5 site. Now, it's not an industrial-zoned site, it's an F5 site. F5, F5 is farming. And what do we have on farms? We have animals on farms. So if the noise, if the octave band level disrupts wildlife or any life, it's a little unfortunate that maybe my human life isn't as important as some animal life, but I'll go with anything right now, if the octave band level is gonna negatively impact farm life, that's the zone. That's the zone for that property. Again, if Invenergy cannot live within the rules, then they shouldn't be granted a waiver. That's another speech. One last point in Mr. Hankard's letter. He did literature review, because he's not an expert in noise for octave band levels and the impact on animals. And to quote, "The literature I have read does not speak in terms of absolute levels in the phrases 'data lacking and needs more study of frequent.'" That sounds like Invenergy's application to me.
Yeah.
We've heard from you, sir. We've heard from you, sir.
You didn't hear about this?
No, it's okay. This one.
Just one.
No, no.
Give him a waiver.
Well, it's just a process. Granting a variance before you get, grant a special exception is out of order. Because if you're, if you're granting a variance, why would you grant a variance to something that it might not fit? If it fits, you're allowed by Superior Court, Supreme Court case, Ollie, which I'm sure you know, is City of Newport versus Lloyd. And what it says is that a variance cannot be given to someone looking for a special exception until a special exception is approved. Because by nature of a variance or a waiver, says that it does not fit, it does not meet all the requirements, it's not in harmony with the ordinance. So it has to be approved first, or at least given a consent for a special exception before you can entertain a variance or a waiver.
You are way over your two minutes, please.
I just wanna answer.
Is there someone else?
I just wanted to answer, Mr. Ollie.
You've been way, way over your two minutes.
Oh, Mr. Ollie, my, the email that I received from Mr. Hessler, the, the letter that I received, the email, that I received back from Mr. Hessler, was on Sunday, the 21st of August.
Raise your right hand, some swear the testimony, you're about to give a series of truth, the whole truth doesn't have the truth.
Yes.
State your name, please.
Frank Silva, F.R.A.N.K., S.I.L.D.A. Now, regards to Spectra, Mr. Hessler had mentioned that the low-octave band would basically be hiding, what Invenergy's output would be, from near-low-octave band, is that correct?
State your case, sir.
No, I'm just asking, is that...
We're not, we're not answering questions from the audience. State your case.
All right, so what I'm getting at is, right now, Spectra is applying for the FERC to do some more expansion. This low-octave band is not gonna go away. And believe me, this whole audience is really interested in this sound and getting it mitigated. So at some point, there's a very good chance that Spectra is gonna bring down those low-octave bands. And if you give them a waiver, where's your octave band's gonna be? That sounds just gonna be radiating all the way through. All right? Thank you.
Great, thank you. That concludes the public portion of the hearing. Public portion is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question to ask noonan. Since this application was filed since we last met, the project envisioned the use of water from Pasco well number 3A, which I understand Pasco and Harrisville both had now retracted their commitment to do so. Can you shed a light unto this board as to what your proposal now will be with respect to the use of water?
Swear a river. Swear a river. Swear a river. Swear again.
Please. In response to that question, the issue is the water, obviously. We are in discussions to obtain an alternate source, it's not related in any way to well 3A. Those discussions are progressing, but there's nothing that we can provide or state publicly at this time. So those are, obviously, it's, the water is essential to this, to the project. But at this time, as I said, look, we can't disclose those negotiations. We will as soon as we can make it.
Are you in active negotiations with the water source?
Yes.
And not gonna develop any scores ago?
I can't at this point, except to tell you it's not real.
I think I'll give my call, so. I find it a little unfair, we were given this report, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we had no advance warning there was gonna be any alternate records being submitted to us tonight.
They are, as I said, reports have been previously been provided, I had spoken with the solicitor this morning, if they're, you know, if they cause a problem, I can retract them, but they are already in the public record, I didn't know what the zoning board had access to. They were part of the planning board record, and I provide them to supplement the transcripts that are appended as part of the record.
What is it said?
I have it.
I got it. Yes.
Please explain to me why you're saying, here's a mic, please, a waiver on the octave band waiver. Why do you think you should get this? Because I have a problem with that.
Certainly.
Why is the mic...
Please, thank you.
Sorry. Where do you plan on getting your water from? I would like to know that, because I also have a problem with that. What are you doing with traffic control, rail construction, everything? I just have a big problem with the active octave band waiver.
Could she please be sworn in like a real adult?
She's a lawyer. They're never expecting any time to... I believe, Mr. Petter, you were present at the last zoning board hearing.
It's the last question.
Oh, no, that wasn't my point. My point, I'm going to the issue about traffic and construction. We did go through all that, in fact, I have McMahon, we went through all that testimony.
Change your plans on the water, since you can't get it from Pasco and Harrisville, you have to get it from somewhere else. So this will change.
All right, well, let me, let me answer your questions sort of in the order they came through. On the octave band waiver, it is our request for the waiver, as we're allowed to, in fact, entire reason why your zoning board exists is to give variations and approvals that are not directly in accordance with the letter of the law. So our request for that is based on the science of sort of the noise frequencies, and from our expert and from Mr. Hessler, the fact that the ordinance, one, is unusually restrictive, and secondly, that effectively, it does not relate to a translatable issue or problem, really is what it is. The question that came before, the question that came before the planning board had to do with effects on wildlife, and that was a follow-up question from the last meeting. And again, our, you know, our expert looked at it, and Hessler did, saying that they do not believe that there would be an impact. Questions were just brought up about, you know, if Spectra reduces its, if it does reduce its, what impact that will be. Mind you, Spectra is already allowed to be at the higher DV level, I don't know if they're...
Not allowed.
Mr. Chairman, I can't get a record.
Please, please. You may not agree, but you've gotta give her the good chance.
So that's the point on the, on the octave, was that there was no effect upon, on the wildlife, that's the position. And if Spectra does reduce it, as I said, they are allowed to have a higher DV level per FERC, they are above the town's limits, we're down at the 43. What impact, you know, the change or something will have on the low-octave, we don't, we don't have that information at this point. But we're basing it on the science from both our expert and on the town's, that low-octave band waiver is appropriate in this case, as waivers are granted by this board on many other occasions.
What vote?
Here's the mic, please.
We're the zoning board here, and we grant variances and special use permits when we have proper information. If we don't have that information, how can we grant this?
I do believe that we have provided as much of this as we can on this, through expert testimony, you have the benefit of peer review from your, from your town. I honestly don't know what else could be provided. This, this topic has been exhaustively, exhaustively reviewed. People, really, I'm trying to address the board number, can you just give me a little quiet? I don't speak when you speak.
Please, please. We're gonna get through this. You thought, why would you wanna drown somebody's voice in giving us an answer? I, I would think we're better than that, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not in the business of admonishing people, but we gotta let people answer our questions. We're all talking about how we don't have answers, and somebody wants to give us an answer, we shout them down. Is that the right thing to do? Okay, we're done.
We apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, please. Ollie. Board, should we help for discussion between ourselves amongst ourselves? Anybody have any to discuss?
I'm confused about something. I remember Spectra coming before us to view, not having anything to do with them. I mean, it's a different issue.
Facility site board only addresses the, our creation, the Spectra Energy is under federal program, regulated by the federal FERC. So they don't, unless the FERC requests, sometimes they do, they actually did, on case of smaller compressor that was put on over, Invenergy's Electric Ocean State Power facility, Tennessee Gas Backwater, you're all into it.
I have one other question.
Bottom line on that type of question, that question, we had no input then either.
It is, I, I think I recall, in fact, that Ocean State Power is doing some upgrades, is that true? They don't know that for a fact either? Because if, in fact, they are, they might be coming up to the same level as the Invenergy project, but I've been told, or thought I'd read somewhere, that, that they were doing extensive upgrades.
If they are, that would be in front of the energy facility site.
So that's, there's no, nothing official on that, or nothing that's been said?
We haven't.
Okay. You know, the rumor mill, we eat it all out.
If I may answer that question, I was involved with the litigation with Ocean State. And in the process of litigating and negotiation and settlement, awful lot was discussed regarding the cost versus benefit of expanding or keeping the plant operating. They were even considering building a separate unit in addition to what they have now, because the, the usefulness of, of the present machinery is running out, and the cost of renovating one particular generator was somewhere around $40 million. And they weren't sure whether or not they were going to keep it operational, or put more money into it, and they weren't sure how, how much longer it was going to last. So that happened approximately six or eight months ago. You did read a lot, at least we discussed it at length, we discussed it for months. But I don't know whether or not they're going forward.
George, you gotta have something?
Yeah, based on all the testimony I've heard, based on the testimony I've heard from everybody tonight, and how we generally conduct our own affairs, until I get more facts, my answer is no. Because there's too much left, there's too much read between the lines here. I wanna know where that water was cut from.
Okay, another, another question. And it, and it goes to something that was testified to down here regarding whether a waiver was the legal way to, to handle it, whether we were allowed to give a waiver according to the, the law that was discussed by one of the gentlemen down here. Can you address the legalities of the waiver?
Yes. The first question that should be addressed is whether or not a special use permit is going to be granted or not. But once again, you do not make that decision, all you can do is submit an opinion to the advisory board, I mean, to the sighting board. They can ignore your opinion, they can modify your opinion, they can come up with their own reasoning. But with respect to the normal process, let's say this is not a sighting board situation, but it's a regular application that you, you are about to make a decision upon, you would first have to make a decision on whether or not to grant a special use permit before you address the issue of variance.
Thank you, and you have to remember, there are too many people practicing law.
Special and right answers.
I guess this isn't, this isn't specifically a question, but it is a concern that I have feels. With regard to the water issue, if, if the plant goes through beyond our control, and water is, is not coming from a local source, say like in Pasco or any other place, locally, if, if it's trucked in, or if it's brought through some other way, if that, the added fuel used to move the water around, would also be a concern, because you're, you're burning fuels to get the water to, burn more fuel for energy, so it's sort of like an added effect, so. It's not so much a question, just a topic of discussion, I guess.
Would you like to ask Ms. Noonan the question, or?
Not that exactly.
What, is, is that...
We're not contemplating trucking.
Okay. Is that what my question, trucking would be? Would that be a source in any situation, I suppose, or?
I don't suppose I could say any situation, not knowing, you know, I mean, I know there are a few situations where it's occurred here, but it's not our plan to trucking water to the daily use supply.
Okay, thank you. You'd better testify that you don't have the ability to truck it in.
The roads to fight for this.
George, please. I didn't get your point.
Would it be your plan? Would it be your plan to dig up our roads and pipe it in?
At this point, we don't have.
What?
We don't have, we don't have that fix. Due to changes from.
Will you provide us with that information?
As soon as we have it, we can do it. It's not kept.
We give an advisory opinion tonight. We'll have to give it without that.
Sir, I understand.
I have a question. What would happen to Phil while they're building?
Can you speak it to the mic, please?
No, we can't hear this.
We can't hear a microphone.
What would happen to Phil as they're building this project?
As I sit here, I don't.
Where is that going?
I don't have those plans in front of me. We do have, you have a ordinance in town on this type of thing. You have to comply with that ordinance. So again, I haven't, I don't have the details on where the fill would be, but the building, you know, building permits will be issued and that will be monitored. It will have to be in accordance with law, but I don't have that information tonight.
Shouldn't you already have the C and A?
We, the way, the way this process works, I know, is, seems cumbersome and it's different than the normal procedure. But we're going into hearings before the energy facility siding board and things are developed in a certain way. So we do not have fully designed plans. As almost any project that comes before you does not have fully designed plans. And certainly the cuts and fills for the.
That's not so. Most projects that come before us.
Yeah. I don't know how verbless practices, I've been doing this for 25 years. I don't present construction plans to a zoning board. On a planning board, we'll have some of that information, but that detail frequently gets in on the building plan and later, later on, the building permit. Those actual plans for construction are different than the plans for zoning, in my experience. Verbal may be different and I understand that. But in my experience, construction plans differ from zoning and planning submissions. So my short answer is I do not have that.
It's not your first call.
It's your chair, a minor point, but if council's going to testify, you've sworn in.
Sir. The public part of the testimony has been closed.
And she hasn't been sworn in.
Serious violation, serious violation. Who knows that?
The person testifying, the person testifying for energy is a deterrent.
Swear it?
Excuse me.
I was an attorney. If you insisted me that I be sworn in.
Sir, I did not know you were on.
I am an attorney, not a licensed owner.
I apologize.
I will concede I'm not licensed or.
I apologize, sir. I did not know, you did not identify yourself as an attorney.
For those that don't know, it is the practice in the state of Rhode Island that determiners are not sworn under oath. We are officers of the court. That is our obligation.
Michelle, you done?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm missing something here. The application that we have in front of us refers to a special use permit and a height variance. Am I correct in assuming that that's right in front of the board? A special use permit, obviously, and the height variance.
Correct.
For the, is that not? Just walking by, the way that board normally does business, obviously, this is a little different from the way we normally conduct our hearings. But generally, we have construction documents in front of us showing, let's just go to the variance with the height on the structures, on the superstructures, the chambers and whatnot that you're asking me to read from. Generally, we have diagrams showing the structure itself. A lot of times when we were dealing with the tower issue in town a few years back, some of you remember, that when the tower companies wanted to come in, they basically had testing in the area where they were going to put a tower. They would either put up a balloon or some sort of, something to give the residents of town an idea of what they would be looking at once these things include. And I find it hard to make any sort of recommendation, never mind an advisory opinion. Something that I see pictures of, I don't have anything specific in front of me. Our documents in our zoning ordinance specifically asks if you want a special use permit, establish detailed records, submissions of drawings, maps, plot specifications, and put in front of this board, we have to make some sort of a rational decision on whether we want to move forward on something like this. Now, I understand from our solicitor that there is information from basically the, or the engineering department, environmental management, a number of other agencies that have not been forwarded with the information. I understand that's not available to us. But some of this basic information that we normally see on a general everyday basis, when somebody comes to us, if they have a garage that's going to be a little bit taller than it used to be, they show me a drawing. You give you an idea of where it's going to go on the property. I get a picture of the house, a picture of what it's going to look like. So that I can make some sort of a determination on whether, I mean, if in the off chance that this gets approved, we, you know, as residents of the town, innocent board, we would like to know specifically what this thing's going to look like sticking up out of the ground. So I, I know this is close to the public and we're speaking amongst ourselves, but I have a problem basically trying to prevent some of the confusion here. I have a lot of papers.
Do you have the plant sentence?
I have a lot of information here, but it's, you know, it's not very explicit. It's not very, I mean, from what we're looking at and from what I have to look at, I'm in the construction field. I don't see anything that's going to make it, make me feel comfortable to make any sort of decision here tonight or in the future without some of this information as a board that we normally receive.
Do you have the plant, set of plants?
I have a set of plants. A very small set of plants. There's no detail to it, that's all. If you want, if you, if you'll stay, and I'm not trying to. I don't see that or a picture of it. That's, that's the plant. I have a problem with that because I can see that you've got to put a plant, but I don't see the. I see that the plant's going there, but normally when we as a board gather to make any sort of determination whether it be advisory or not, we generally have no information. And I'm not asking for the, or the engineer to give me something. I'm not asking for DEM to give me something. I know the height of the chicken. I know the height of the house. I just want to see how it's going to reflect if this thing gets approved. So as a board member, I have a, I have a problem with it on the most basic level. We don't have a lot of information. I think Inven Energy should have had a little bit more information supplied to us, just on the plant itself and just on what you're going to do with it. I mean, never mind that you don't own the land. I'm not going to even get into that. We don't, I don't have anything here in front of me that tells me that this is going to be what it's going to be, which I don't know what it's going to be. I can't make that determination as a zoning board member. And I guess getting to that point, it's going to be hard for me to make any sort of rational decision here.
That is the supplemental that we have.
And I understand that, but you have this coming from me. If you were sitting here and I showed you something of this small scale on something that's going to be so big.
Those are the size of the drastic nukes. I could give you large sheets if that's what you want. I don't think that's your point.
I do have, if you, if you put it on big screen, show it to me, but nobody has, nobody's shown it. So I just have a problem because if you've got to do a project this size and spend this kind of money, do you think that you have something a little more detailed to put in the wood?
Thank you for mentioning that. I thought it was my age and I couldn't read. And correct me if I'm not mistaken, but didn't the planning board ask you to submit larger plans?
I know that they would ask for a larger copy of the survey and you provided that.
Michelle, you want to get back to it?
I'm sorry?
You want me to get back? Because we're at the point now where we're going to entertain a motion. Remember, it's denial or approval of our advisory opinion for why you can't approve of this in your advisory. Remember, we're not making a decision. We're only issuing an advisory opinion. And for the record, something I didn't mention earlier tonight, just a little deviation from our normal voting, we had one member, Mr. Patriaka, missed one meeting. So he's not, while he's very eligible to participate in all phases, he's not eligible to vote tonight. So first, all that Sandra Cooney will be voting. Right? Are you ready? Thank you all so much for your help in conducting this meeting.
This is Shannon. Everybody that sits around this table is not an idiot. And everybody that sits near us is not an idiot.
It's okay. Okay, we understand.
Before you vote, be aware that those stacks were in Inven Energy's application. You can see them from those in the press. They power over trees by over 100. Just be aware of that. You can see the stacks from those.
We're hopefully going to give you a very detailed advisory opinion. I'm going to make a motion through the chair. Due to almost total lack of concrete information, we, we and the planning board before us have asked in several different ways, several different times for concrete information from this company. And they've either ignored our questions or evaded them or answered in a very vague manner. Well, we've gotten no definite answers on, as far as I can tell, anything. You're looking for a special use permit in an F5 zone. There's no way that I can see that that and that goes with our comprehensive plan and fits in with the land use of this town. And I'm going to be quoting a lot from the planning board advisory opinion. We lack, we are lacking an engineering design. As Ken was alluding to a few minutes ago, we have no plans. Nothing that we can read. The big question, and we've asked this over and over and over again, available water supply. There is no water supply. As a matter of fact, they've been denied any more water from anybody in this town. And if they were to attempt to drill a well and draw from the groundwater, it would seriously deplete the apple for an old town. It would. It would stop any further development. It would cripple the town from developing anything further after this. And who knows? There's no guarantee that there's enough water for them. I've heard that there's up to a million gallons of water per day demand at times for this plant. That's totally irresponsible to draw. Now, again, tonight, they answered us very vaguely about a potential water source from somewhere else, but we have no information at all. Part of the natural and cultural resources chapter of our comprehensive plan is to maintain and improve the existing quality of drinking water and to reduce and encourage measures with reduced air pollution levels. This certainly does not do that. Our economic development, we do have economic development. For those who think that this town is just a rural town, it's just woods and animals, there is an economic development plan. And Chapter Seven, policies that maintain industrial and commercial sector growth at a rate adequate to support the population. This does not do that. Chapter Eight, Recreation, Conservation, Open Space, 7.2.8.1, work toward prevention or mitigation of adverse impacts of human activities on wildlife habitat. As we heard tonight from the testimony from the audience, noise, no one knows how the noise is going to affect our animals, which are very important to us. 9.5. B, minimize the adverse effects of power generation, power generation transmission facilities on the environment. This certainly does none of that. And again, the most important is the public water. The town will be facing a public water moratorium on future village growth if this is approved. It's unbelievable that we'd even consider that. This was on to say, and I will quote the planning board, and by the way, I commend the planning board for all the hard work and diligence that they did. And that meant starting with and ending with our town plan that did an. We did an exceptional job. We all... One point I will respectfully disagree with the zoning, with the planning board. They recommend that the zoning board grant the octave band waiver special use permit from the octave band limits of the noise orders. They do say that we should grant that provided all the conditions set forth in paragraph 3 are strictly compliant, which is what I mentioned earlier, that we could put a condition on this that if they didn't meet all our conditions, then the plan would be rejected. But I feel better just not to crane it in the first place. For the record, the reason for that is that we've heard too much testimony. We heard from a witness tonight who did tremendous amount of research where the octave band can be controlled, can be limited. I'm not sure the source, but the person quoted several sources and I believe to be legit, so that's the way I'm going with that. The big problem I have is with their, and they testified to this, but it's an, of course, there's an existing access road to Algonquin Gas now. They refuse or are unable to come to an agreement with Algonquin Gas where they insist that they have to build their own access road, which would put two access roads, some of which are going through wetlands in very close proximity to each other. I, for the life of me, cannot find the reason for that. Why they can't get together with anyone? I think, maybe I've exhausted everything that I have to put into this, but I want to thank you for your attention and your cooperation with this meeting. It's not easy on anybody, and I thank you for that.
In regards to the motion being made by the chairman, I'm going to vote to deny. And I'm going to give you just a couple of reasons why. I think I spoke to you a little bit tonight, lack of detail, lack of information to the board. Also, it's striking the application. And I can understand, you know, why they propose it the way they do, but that this will not alter the general character of the surrounding areas beyond me. With that, I vote to deny.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to put this on record, even though I cannot vote, I wish I could. I am extremely insulted that you're very vague on everything we have asked you. I take that person as an insult. I think the people in this town take that personally. I just want to put that on record.
Essentially, this does not fit in with the town's comprehensive plan. And as members of this board, we had to protect the town, protect the comprehensive plan. And this is just too vague. For that reason, I'm voting to deny.
I would just like to say that dealing with this has been very confusing. All the contradictory testimony comes from all sides. You know, everybody can be very effective presenting their own cases, and it's very confusing and difficult, but we did have to come to a decision. I concur with everything the chairman said. One thing that wasn't brought up was I think that Invenergy hasn't really proven that the electricity they generate, they would be able to sell it and use it so it would be worthwhile for it to be there. But, and as other people have stated, I really am concerned about the water issue and the environment and the animals, so I vote to deny.
Well, all the reasons for denial have been made. So I won't act wrong. You already know how I feel. I vote for deny.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a vote in this as an alternate. I am skeptical of the release of the active band. And I do respect our, the town's consultants, Mr. Hessler's opinion. But I am skeptical of having a full release on it. I'm also skeptical of the... In the past hearings, over the beginning of the summer, there was a heavy reliance during the sound in the startup, in the shutdown, on contractors for the valve manufacturing and having them... There was a heavy reliance on, from Invenergy, on contractors for making the sound, making the sound decimals low enough for the valves to make the sound decimals lower. Where they were relying on the contractors to make that happen. And I don't know whether or not that's still the case, but it all falls under the Invenergy envelope for a product ultimately. But it's just another layer of liability issues. And so that makes me concerned. And I would vote no if I have to.
We all good? Joe, would you like to add a testimony of all this? Any concerns that you have as a building official or zoning official? You don't have to if you don't want to. Very good. Okay, so we've heard, how you feel? We need to take a formal vote. How are you voting, Ken?
The second in the motion, make it...
Yeah, we're not making a decision. We're only forming an advisory opinion. Your vote on the advisory opinion is? Michelle?
Voting to deny.
Sandra? George? Of course, the chair will also vote to deny unanimously. Certainly because it doesn't meet any of the standards of our comprehensive plan. Motion to adjourn?
I'd like to say one more thing. Proud of all of you folks.